I'd like to call this meeting the Town Planning Board to order. I believe the only modification we adjourned tonight is we're considering an application of approval for Red Wing's church, given that they need a variance that would complete the secret process. But it is not going to be secret though, so the ZBA can act.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, oh, good. The ZBA program is not going to be meeting this week, and so we're going to hold that over to June 2nd, so that the ZBA can act and reconfirm the variances, just to make sure that there then are no legal complications with that. Other than that, the agenda stands as has written. Oh, yes, in Duffy, thank you. The public hearing for Duffy will be continued either until, well, there's a possibility that maybe the May 19th meeting. If not, it will be continued to the June 2nd meeting at the request of the applicant. They're submitting new material, which is back right there, and no one's had a chance to review all of it, and they just came in, I believe, today, so...
If you're going to continue the public hearing to that particular date, of course, the motion...
As soon as we get to that, yes.
Over. No minutes to consider this evening. My people, sir.
Right. But I have a motion to accept our meeting notes. Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And amongst correspondence, one thing we did receive was from the attorney for Red Wing. We were copied on a letter to the attorney for the town planning and zoning, to John Lyons, referring to the town board proposal to minimize the town of Rhinebeck. It does not apply any application before the planning board, but we were copied on it, so it will be in the record. All right, our first public hearing is in four minutes. Is there anything else we can do before that?
I don't think so.
No, I don't either.
No referrals or anything of that sort?
No, I think also everybody else in the public hearing has run under my discussion again.
CSI is on the discussion, and everything else for the public hearing.
Yeah, I don't know if it's...
You're just going to pick some...
Yeah. Maybe we should schedule the first public hearing at like 7:30. Okay. Much like you were about to say. Yeah, actually, according to the schedule, John, on the schedule, we actually scheduled the meeting for May 19th. It's on the schedule. We actually have a meeting scheduled for May 19th. What was I put on?
At the last meeting, I asked you just if that meeting might not be necessary after that.
Well, no, mine's... It's looking like it may be.
So, you're checking.
I believe that if we are going... Perhaps what we can do is reconfirm that we're going to have a meeting on May 19th, 6:30, and we can develop the agenda tonight for that meeting. How's that sound? But I have a motion to that effect. Second. I can tell you're all thrilled about that in town.
We do have four.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. And you're all going to show up on the night, right?
Yes.
6:30, and we'll develop this agenda as we go. Why depress everyone anymore? That's completely insane, but we'll be upset that you go to June. What do you think, close enough? Okay, first public hearing for tonight. Paul Matthews will post vote subdivision plan continuation for receipt of survey information from December 19th, 2013, February 13th, and March 3rd, and April 7th, 2014, and the Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision plan, and an application for subdivision plan approval in matter of the progress of the two parcels of the town's LWRA and rural countryside district. We have none to secret. We just received this survey map, I think, what's the date of the map on it?
23rd.
May 23rd, so I'd rather not have a chance to review it now. April 23rd?
Yes.
So that was passed, okay, that was passed through our last meeting. So, they are still going to be reviewing it, this is one of the public hearings that continued to the 19th, so they have a chance to review it. I don't know if there's anything else we require to the LWRA, I believe we have the coast of consistency. I'm looking at the applicant. They have the coast of consistency form for the consolidation?
No, I didn't know we needed it.
It is in the LWRA, I believe. We have a list of those people. Let's take a break. It may not be...
It's not the only application we're considering, sure.
Except for the survey, I think you're not going to be right. I think I was correct, I actually have our real waiting for what's the survey.
Yeah, it's planned out.
Yeah, that's going to be the one important. In the meantime, you will review this.
The land within the village is being held separate from the land within the town, except for...
That's right.
So that's that remaining 0.76 or whatever.
Right.
Okay, so the parcel area, it's 3.5, it's being consolidated with the existing Benetius, except for...
That's right, 13 acres, that 3.5 is going to be consolidated with the 13 acres in the village lot, it's going to be a separate parcel in the village.
Okay.
There's already a tax record for it, and a separate property for why, a separate tax ID.
So it's going to be another consolidation of those two lots in town.
Yes, the town portions.
Any questions, members of the public?
I guess I missed that, these are, it's actually two consolidations of two different pieces, and two in the town, and two in the village.
No, the village, I don't know if they're part of the village, but it's just a consolidation of the parcels in the town, of two parcels in the town.
Isn't there one more corner of property in the village? Yeah, that's what I was just describing, Rich, it's got a separate tax ID, it has had, and it's even got an address, 68, the separate parcel. The deed Mr. Matthews had was for both the 3.5 acres in the village lot. So now Marie Welch has made a separate deed description for the village lot, and one for the town lot, which will be consolidated with the 13 acres. That's the reason we need this survey, for many, but that's one.
Also, I think the other thing we needed, that Marie's survey would demonstrate that there is exactly factually low percentage of the submissions you couldn't tell.
96 feet in the town and 130 feet in the village. That's line one and line three on your development exam.
Any questions, members of the public? And I think nothing from members of the planning board? See, our is just seen as we don't have a residential approval tonight. But we're doing the community of public hearing until...
Special meeting.
Special meeting on the 19th, at which time we should go to the public hearing after the resolution of the deal.
I don't see, just in looking at this, I don't see any problems with the submission. I might be recommending as part of that resolution, an expansion, if necessary, I'm talking to the board here, I'm back working. An expansion of the note, there's a note here that says, "Construction of driveway crossing parcel acre from Montgomery Street to the other lane of Benetius may subject to permitting process reported by DUC. I believe that it may also be subject to permitting processes reported by the town under the weapons permit." I think that language would be added, but beyond that, I don't see any issues involved.
Okay. So could I have a motion to continue this public hearing until May 19th at 6:30, 6:35?
Over.
All in favor?
And direct resolution.
And direct resolution of approval, due to the draft by our... All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Yes.
Both sides.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is Red Wing Properties, I'm going to continue myself, and the vice chairman, he's taking over.
Can you place that in the remarks?
The next item on the agenda is the public hearing, continuation of public hearing for Red Wing Properties Inc., over Vincent Kenyon Line, 234 to 286 White's Blough House Road, special use permit and site plan, the continuation for purposes of receiving information on the site access issue for February 3rd, March 3rd, and April 7th, 2014, of public hearing on applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 120 for zoning, and a matter of proposed special use permit to continue mining within nine acres of 38 acre life of mine area within the rural countryside RC5 and soil mining overlay SMO districts, and to introduce within the nine acre area subaqueous mining with related installation of DUC approved turboheads being an emergency action under secret. Is there someone here from Red Wing? Okay, I open it at this point up to the public, for anyone who would like any comments. Anyone, any public comment?
We'll wait for something, Matthew.
Okay, all right.
Melody, John Lyons, the private attorney, was recommended that the letter that was received from Mr. Bernstein on April 17th be not read, but simply entered into the record, doesn't necessarily have to be read.
Okay.
But be entered into the record and referred to his office for review and recommendation to planning board as to this decision.
Right, we, our receipt of a letter dated April 17th, 27, 14, from Kevin Bernstein of Bonner, Schumach, and King, E. L. C., that raises some legal concerns, we have not had an opportunity yet to have this reviewed by the planning board attorney, and so we will be referring it to Mr. Lyons for his review and input, and this will go into the record tonight.
To clarify, for the record, for general, this is the shorter of the two letters from Mr. Bernstein, the one that follows along the subject line, Red Wing Request to Modify a Special Use Permit.
Right, and this is the one that is addressed to me as the vice chair.
Is, I'm sorry, is that the letter, I haven't actually gotten a chance to read it, but is it about not needing an access point for, in order to approve the special use permit?
That is part of what the letter is in reference to.
Okay, will we get a chance to read it at some point, or after your...
It's in the record.
It's in the record, the one with Dr. Henry.
Oh, okay.
So you can come into the office and request the opportunity to review that letter.
Great, thank you.
And we will be thus continuing, recommending and continue the public hearing until the June 2nd meeting, which will give the planning board attorney the opportunity to read this letter and get back to us for his concepts, recommendations.
That would be a motion to continue at 6:35 on June 2nd, because that would be the first item.
6:35. Do I have a motion, second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close extension.
Thank you, David. All right, now, our next public hearing is in 40 seconds. It will be, when we get there, continued, Carol Blackwood, from another street, subdivision plan, special use permit and site plan, continuation from April 7th, 2014, combined public hearing and application for subdivision plan appealing on the Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land, an application for special use permits and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125, a combination of passing the single parcel to 0.61 acres by 64 in the most viewed in Rhine Cliff amulet and overlay, overlay district, Hudson River National District Landmarks District, and the town's LWR A, and both renovation and expansion of the existing dwelling to 4,096 square feet, and construction of a new garage on the second floor intended to use as a 800 square foot attached accessory dwelling unit, being a type of mansion under secret, and matter of pending applications before the ZBA. And I will open the public hearing, because I believe it's time. At our last meeting, before we even start, we had a discussion of the Rhine Cliff Overlay District... Okay, is this under 125-69, Rhine Cliff Overlay District? B, objectives, all proposed development and redevelopment within the boundaries of the Rhine Cliff Overlay District shall be insistent to follow the objectives, and then goes on to the 12 objectives. I had a conversation with our attorney, John Lyons, to ascertain exactly what constrains this places upon the planning board, in terms of dealing with this particular application and the application of the overlay district. John told me that since the word shall is used, we are constrained to require that those objectives be met. We are not a legislative body, we can't amend the law, we are not a quasi judicial body like the ZBA, we cannot interpret the law. We're an administrative body, we have to administer it as written, as interpreted either through the courts, or through the ZBA, or through the enforcement officer. Therefore, those objectives, those 12 objectives, need to be met by any project to be constructed within the Rhine Cliff Overlay District. Having said that, John has recommended that the applicant, in the interest of the project, actually give us a narrative for each objective of how this project meets that objective. That's the requirement that we need to be able to ascertain, has been done, and I think it's only fair that the applicant be given to do that. So that's something that I would like to ask the applicant to provide for us, who would obviously be continuing this public hearing, but to provide it for us, as a legal consequence stated. Having said this, I'll open the public hearing, I know that first may be planning board members, we all did site visits this past week ago today, and anyone have any comment they would like to make on what they saw, and we need to discuss it prior to meeting here tonight, and here we are, so here's your shot, if you want to take any comment. And you want to the public just to make any comment?
I'm not sure what's appropriate, my name is Wendell Smith, I'm resident Rhine Cliff, I live on James Street, and so my objection is, has been, and will continue to be, the height of the hedge of 11 feet, the block view, for whatever reasons, I think it's inappropriate to block the Hudson River view for any reason, including the Kingston roundout and the whole river in general. I think that that would be a travesty of justice. For building and doing what she needs to do to make that thing whatever she wants, that's fine by me, but the blocking of the view, that bothers me. You've got walkers, you've got runners, you've got people that come up there to see the fireworks, all of which are not necessarily appreciated by some people, and so we get hedges, and I think that's inappropriate now. I will be at the meeting tomorrow night too, but I will say, I put up a fence at the, you know, I got dogs I brought home from the UK with me, and little creatures, and so I put up a fence to keep them in the yard so they could run around. I went to the zoning officer, I got permission to put up my fence, a four-foot fence, they gave me that permission, and they made me put a flat top on each post, because it would be higher than four feet, I wanted to put a little point on each post, and they said, no, that's a violation of the law, that's higher than four feet, you're staying with four feet. Now that's on James Street, that is, I have a limited view of the river from the deck of my barn, but I don't have a limit, or from my windows on my second floor, but I don't have a view from ground level, I look at the property and all the people in the butt me, because it's just above us. However, and it didn't make sense, but I just went with it, and I said, okay, so flat top on each post, and I think that good for the goose is good for the gander, let's not block the view for everybody else, for whatever the reasons are here, let's just keep the view open to the public, you have very little view that's so easily reached by the public now, for the Hudson River, that it doesn't make sense to stop that much more footage of whatever they're intending to do. That's my, that's my feeling, that's my thought, and I'll speak that again tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night is...
I think they have a, there's another meeting tomorrow night for the visiting board, right?
No, there's only going to be Wednesday night.
Is it?
Yeah, they meet Wednesday night, and there's some question whether they're going to meet tomorrow night, or Wednesday night, I should say, so, you know, call, call Wednesday morning to make sure they're here.
I hear this all the time, all right, I will, excuse me, I will call, and I'll find that out, but, you know, it gets moved around a little bit. But I want to make it sure that people realize there's a public interest involved here in the beauty of the Hudson River, and it's not fair, I don't think the voices are here, because they walk their dogs, they don't necessarily live right on our exact patch, so that's the reason that I'm bringing this up. I do live there, I bought that house specifically for that location, specifically for that region, for that view, and I get it when I come home, or leave, or walk, that's it, but I mean, I'm afraid of blocking it, and so that's, that's my pitch.
Thank you.
Any questions, I mean?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
My name's Johnny, now I'm at 55, we're now, and my property overlooks the third parcel, and some people, I'm not confronting the board, it's not about one person's project, there's neighbors, there's the public, there's tourism, and I looked up in the zoning, and it just keeps making, to conserve scenic views and the town rural character, I wrote them down, 531, it just kept coming up in the zoning book, I looked at the library, it just keeps talking about views, the Hudson River, and protecting all this, and there will be no control of the hedges, and the hedges began at 11 feet, so maybe they'll adjust to the five or six, but I don't think there should be any hedges. It's, it, it, Mr. Blackwood is, wants all this privacy, 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 but it's the expense of the neighbors, it's the expense of the tourism, it's a scenic road, it's on the Hudson, I mean, I could go on and on all night, and the hedges seem to be a mechanism to capture, encapsulate, create a compound, so the use of the hedges is almost like a structure, when you're talking 11 foot, putting it between buildings, or putting it in a row, they're going to grow, and, you know, it should be written in somehow, you know, if the project goes ahead, and if the buildings are granted, that there shall be no further obstruction of the view. I'm just fearful that once the project goes ahead, that hedges will start to appear, and so I don't know how to write the law, but, you know, I don't want to be wrong with my view, I have a very small house, I pay large taxes, I pay for the view, that's why I bought the house, it wasn't for the house, it was for the view, I don't want to lose it, my neighbors don't want to lose it, and I think the hedges is a big issue, you know, a very big issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last person to speak tonight, Steve.
I'm Steve Manche, Carolyn's architect. If, if the hedges aren't allowed, then this scheme will be abandoned, and the privacy will be achieved by building buildings. The view's going to be blocked one way or another, and you can't stop that. Right now, we're preserving your view in particular, but if we can't do this scheme, then we'll be building probably on the vacant site, so you should keep that in mind when you're opposing, that it's not going, there's no way, there's no way that she can build something without blocking some of the...
Steve, you actually addressed the board, not the public. Well, yes, I mean, I think it's the board, but please, address us.
Sorry.
We have nothing to change during that, I think we've got to keep this, around table.
Well, I just want to make that point.
Has, has your client agreed to put some kind of an easement on that third parcel so that it can't be broken?
Yes, I understand that that can't be part of this agreement with the board, but yes, she has agreed to consolidate.
I, I mean, there's a big picture about view, preserving the view, and that's the very, it's a common shape too, so I, I mean, you guys, that's your view, that's your regard, and I think the other neighbor looks directly across that beautiful view as well. The hedge thing, is that do we have birdage in our zoning law about hedges? Because there are about eight acres of hedges when we started, so if we say no, it can't be more than five foot, then everyone in Rhine Cliff is in violation of the zoning law, because they have hedges, we can't afford that.
What we might actually see, which, you know, I imagine you're going to put together, is basically a narrative for the 12 objectives that we need to, the planning board needs to enforce, and the hedge, how does the hedge meet these objectives, but it would be one of the elements that will be discussed.
Well, I don't want to be opinion myself, but I don't know how you could discuss that without saying the alternative would be to do it with more buildings. The view, the view will be blocked one way or another, at least partly, whether it's by hedges, or whether we have to go to a different scheme that includes more buildings.
And that may be it, what's going to have to happen is the view will be blocked, according to how these objectives permitted to be blocked, and that's, that's our obligation, we can't change the law, we can't amend it, I mean, that's a discussion that I have with the town board, so whatever is allowed under these objectives, yes, and I imagine part of that would certainly block views.
Whether it's this application or a future application, the same show the requirements that are in the overlay district will apply to any application taken in that.
Of course, but since it is permitted to build a building on each of those sites, I mean, there's a kind of contradiction in the situation, right? Since you can't block a view, right, you can't build a building, it doesn't work that way. I mean, we're trying to block as little of the, of the view as we can, the least desirable part of the view, and still achieve Carolyn's objective.
And this is the discussion that you will have, addressing these objectives. Steve, this is what we have to go, but this is what we have to actually look at the project and the basis of these objectives, that's what we have to do, so it's not just this objective, just what we think is good or think is bad or whatever, it's the guidance that we're required by law to follow.
Yeah, I understand. One question, and I was trying to think about this when I was reading through the guidelines this afternoon. It's, it's kind of a funny situation, because there's no real appeal, then there's no ZBA to go to, because...
No, it is not.
Which is, which is not the way, there's something wrong with the way this is set up.
Well, it's in Article 78, you can file against either the planning board or the town board, made a decision, you don't want that, so what you would then do?
But can you understand what I'm saying, there's, normally, if there's a rule that a person is supposed to be following, and wants to, and wants to have relief from that, you go to the ZBA. is supposed to be following and wants to, and wants to have relief from that, you'd go to the ZDA. But here we don't have that opportunity.
That would be a carry a variance or possibly a use variance. If you wanted to, if you wanted interpretation of any of this section, you would basically go to the zoning enforcement officer. If you didn't have the zoning enforcement officer, so you could then appeal that to the ZDA.
I understand.
Project on hold.
But in the case of Reincliffe, because there are no rules and everything's at the discretion of the board, except for some very minimal, uh, square footage things. There ought to be a, a, a field process because there are no rules.
What are these objectives? And they do lay out some very rather specific, uh, goals that they expect the planning board to do its best to enforce.
I understand.
Anyone else? Yes?
Then he's going to discuss in Reincliffe. Um, and if this is our word, please just tell me right away. I don't know if the objectives include anything, um, with relation to water health related issues, um, on waste treatment. Um, i- i- in view of the concerns now that we raised about wastewater issues in Reincliffe and the ideas being floated out there about, um, sewage district, that would be very expensive. People will really like this. Um, if this application and other applications that are coming before the planning board include an expansion of living space, which might then include an extension of the number of people living there. Um, and might include that, uh, a greater load to what the substance is of the original well even needs to take and not become a big hassle. Um, is there anything in the objectives or otherwise in the planning process that looks at that as these applications?
Will, will the health department, does any health department have to approve any sanitary facility for any, any structure? Our building room will not be issued until this, the planning for the health department has signed off on the engineering design of waste sewage disposal.
Okay.
So that's when that comes in.
Okay, great.
Anyone else? Okay. Could I have a motion then to continue this public hearing to our, we can do it either May nineteenth or June second?
So I understand the recommendation of the attorney is basically the, uh, but the right of the applicant to have a neck narrative that addresses the objectives. And the question that you're asking up here, uh, is driven by the time for confirmation driven by, uh, how quickly, how long's it gonna take for the, uh, have to prepare that narrative?
That one's not here. I, I assume it lived there on that. You want two weeks, four weeks? Uh, for them two weeks. So we can, we schedule this public hearing to continue on May nineteenth at six forty. Maybe they won on that six thirty.
That's correct.
Okay. Could I have a motion to do so? Second. But, how old neighbor? Where is it?
Uh, do you have a, how, uh, you obviously want to, uh, have a, give you an objection to it?
Mm-hmm, yes.
How long?
You'd probably need a week. So that would definitely give you a week to prepare and review the review. Would that?
Is your attorney gonna review that also?
I would, yes. He, he got us into this.
Well, it's, uh, we, we don't know if the ZDA is meeting this.
I do not know if the meeting...
Because it seems, uh, well, they haven't been doing anything.
Correct. The seekers are responsible. They can't take any action anyway until we figure out. And as that, I don't know. The chairman said he wasn't sure if the meeting just went there now. Okay, moving along.
A simple recommendation in the next matter would have been the continuation of the W hearing. Regardation, some of the, 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 the council. I have a question. I have a question. I'm looking for the first continuation of the hearing on the other W. So here's my next question.
Do you want me to add? Could I have a motion to do so? Second? How old neighbor? Did you get that one, Joey?
Joan, if you advise the project architect or the project attorney, I guess both, that the public hearing on W will be continued on, uh, well, it's been deferred, uh, it'll be, you know, continued on, uh, May, uh, May nineteenth at six fifty.
Oh, right. Wait, I forgot to schedule it though. I don't think, is that applicable? Will, will the secretary please make note that for five minutes ahead of schedule?
May I make a suggestion from the chairman?
Yes, sir.
That the objectives that we're asking the applicant to produce, we should make...
You just want to come up and just tell them what you all want to do.
And they looked at it and everything seemed to be not an issue.
Anything else you want to add?
Just waiting for it to be approved. That's all. The board helps with that. Just waiting for it. That's it.
Joan, for the record, all notice, the board is satisfied?
Correct.
Local concern expressed by, uh, uh, Dutch's county planning? And, uh, the idea is sticking with Secretary Alson?
Yes.
And we need to receive one letter from the neighbor that I don't have, or hoping Sharon has. Could you go get that? I'd love to bring it with me. Oh, you have, Joan, hold the phone. We're, we're prepared and I'll let you. I'll just read this in and then we can respond. It'll be all set. Okay.
Uh, to the, to the main planning board, the resistance of our purchase of proposed construction and occupancy in thirteen thousand fifty-two square foot, the cap of construction dwelling, year two eight six seven root nine G. We live at two eight two nine root nine G, excuse me, which is adjacent to said property. Our concern is what proposed dwelling is to be built. It was already collapsed far and we leave it to our property to the west, but the trees and bushes are very severe structure from our property. We do not want another structure so close to our property within our view. Also, is this square footage of the structure larger than allowed? In addition, we exist in real power of our property in accordance with RC five and WR all. The structure is to be north of our property and there is no problem flooding the water, we don't have any of the structures. And you just said it isn't a market, not your property. And variance has been granted. Thank you very much. Has been granted for this, so.
Uh, I, I know we have one somewhere. I just, that's okay. That's okay. Thank you, Joan. Okay, who did the site visit?
Richard.
Okay. Jesse wanna, and then Richard?
Uh, we went, uh, they posted the sign, showed the property, um. Usually it'd be anything that said, said it was a showstopper, um, pretty wild. The site's, we want screening, it's, we did a pretty viewing, the neighborhood view, um, you know, makes sense for the budget of the house.
I, the, the screening itself was, I mean, the house is set like a lot. I mean, there's, there's humongous pine trees blocking the existing house and our neighbors. It's one in the back, but, uh, fallen in the way that, and there's a lot of trees right there. It's a nice flat, but I do have a question, uh, talking about views. How would this play out if this person didn't want a house for the road to that? I mean, you had your setbacks and, you know, we would say, you know, unfortunately unless you want to make an arrangement with the owner, there would be nothing you could do.
Correct. No, they're not in Reincliffe.
Just, I just wanted to ask.
Members of the public, any comment? Anything else from the planning board? Okay. We can, we will have a resolution approval for you tonight after we finish the public hearings. Can everyone support the public hearing? Second?
Sure.
How in favor?
Are.
Very good. Public hearing's closed.
And you can consider the resolution because you've got six minutes.
All right. Hang on, I gotta leave a...
And the resolution is, um, Michael's got a version there that's slightly modified from the version that I had on my meeting notes. I incorrectly modified this to a type two action. Uh, type two action, if it were a single-family residence or a single-family residence, uh, three standard residence, it would be a type of two. Because it's a detached accessory, uh, unit, it's an unlisted action, therefore there's some additional language in the resolution there with that.
That resolution, uh, with incorporation of secret determination. The town of Reinick planning board upon review by the zoning enforcement officer and upon the satisfaction of the required requirements and the conduct of required duly notice of public hearing provided as follows in the matter of March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, application by John Hillas under Town Co. Chapter one two five zoning for special use permits under the District Schedule of Use Regulations and Article five, section one two five four five and Article six, section one two five six eight E and related site plan review and approval in the matter of proposed construction of one thousand two hundred fifty-two square foot detached accessory dwelling unit with related site improvements on a single-family residential premise, eighteen point three nine acres. At two eight six seven root nine G in rural country side RC five and water resources protection overlay districts, all is depicted as what otherwise described in the site plan and building plan prepared by the, and dated with that too. In short, AAF part one agricultural data statement prepared by the applicant and subject of an area variance to one authorized detached accessory dwelling unit of thirteen fifty-two square feet instead of the maximum nine hundred square foot otherwise included, two grant E from the maximum committed till or fifteen hundred square foot in accessory structures on residential premises set forth in ZDA's resolution of March fifth, two thousand fourteen, in the matter of case number eight five one, being an on this connection under seeker. One, upon review of the AAF part one and in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth in Title six, Part six one seven point seven C NYC IR, it is a negative declaration meaning the DAS do not be required. Two, in consideration of the application for special use permits under Town Co. Chapter one two five zoning, authorize the proposed construction of a thirteen fifty-two square foot detached accessory dwelling unit with related site improvements within the RC five and WR all districts. A, determines neither the use of proposed work contributing any of the general standards for all special use permits set forth in section one two five six seven therein. B, further determines both the use of proposed work agreeing performance with specific standards set forth in section one two five four five therein for development in the water resources protection overlay district. C, further determines both the use of proposed work agreeing performance with a specific standard set forth in section one two five six eight E therein for detached accessory dwelling. D, grants the above set of special use permits cited pursuant to that chapter one two five of the Town Code in the subject of following progressive conditions and or requirement. Payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Reinick in respect of submission review and processing of this application under the Town Co. Chapter one two five, the Town's fee scheduled executed test growth agreement. Two, securing the site plan approval for the proposed work and subsequently a certificate of occupancy for the detached accessory dwelling. Three, consideration of the application for site plan review and approval under Town Co. Chapter one two five zoning, inclusive of the site plan and building plan cited above. A, waives any further site plan requirements as might have been construed to be set forth within section one two five dash seven five C two of the Town Code. B, includes the application for site plan approval and authorizes the change of so note on the site plan and building plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following condition and or requirement within six calendar months for the adoption of this resolution. Payment of any outstanding fee or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Reinick in respect of submission review and processing of this application in the Town Co. Chapter one two five, the Town's fee scheduled executed test growth agreement. In taking this action, the planning board further authorizes the Town's zoning enforcement officer to issue a certificate of occupancy for the detached accessory dwelling that can relate to site improvements upon its determination, both under help department requirements and all under codes, laws, rules, regulations, and the purview of the CPO and/or building inspector, including but not limited to the requirements of the New York State Uniform Building, Construction and Fire Protection Code, have been satisfied.
Could I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Discussion. Oh, oh, Richard?
Yes.
Woody?
I.
Karen?
I.
Yes?
Yes.
Oh, Bella? Bob?
Hi.
Woody? I mean, Justin.
Hi.
Sorry, we, we literally, oh, 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 here. Uh, and I will vote I also. Okay, we're all second. Ready?
I don't know what I'm ready.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't real sure myself. I was gonna, I was gonna use it there. What you mean is just to meet those requirements, get, get me, you know, the, the proper copy and Joni can tell you what I need to stamp and sign. Once that's done, then you can get your building permit.
Yeah, the, uh, the, my, for home people, I, you know.
Okay.
Okay, then we can be stamped.
And Joni can tell you how many copies you're gonna need of everything since I do not recollect the moment. Here you go. Thank you. Okay. Close enough. Next one, Ruby Palmer, agent for John Nathan, three two Kelly Street, special use permit and site plan. Combined public hearing on application for special use permits and site plan review and approval in the matter of proposed ninety-six square foot addition to existing single-family dwelling in Reincliffe Hamlet and Reincliffe Overlake District, Hudson Valley River National Historic Landmarks District and the Town's LWRA, being a type two action under seeker. Okay. Tell the public what you want to do.
Hi. Hi, um, we just want to add on a, a small mudroom to the back of my house at thirty-two Kelly Street in Reincliffe. Um, ninety-two square foot, twenty-six square feet. Um, materials will match to the house, um, it's straightforward.
Woody, you had a site visit. I don't know, Woody, you like the...
Yeah, I'll comment on it. Uh, it's interesting. The lady wants to put a mudroom on the back of the house. She's got two young kids that came in here. If any of you have young kids, they need a mudroom. That doesn't mean your kids can put more mud in the house. That just means, but anyway, I think it's an ideal situation. It's not visible from anywhere. It's, it's, it's a normal progression with young kids and I, I should come across it.
Yeah, I, I participated in the site. If no one's gonna see it, it's at the back of the house. It's a perimeter which has been basically, um, gravel and harder, things of that sort. There's nothing else there. Uh, I believe originally it was a, a boathouse from one of these states that listed as a...
Oh, the barn was.
Okay. I was looking for, maybe electric or something, but, um, it'll fit right in, um, I, I see absolutely no problem whatsoever. Any questions for them to the board? Uh, anyone in the public here to comment? Yes?
I just thought it was interesting that you're, um, doing something on that site where the boathouse was moved and it was, uh, formerly part of the Ellis Bay estate and, um, it has the clerks and massive braces, um, on the, on the boathouse. Still visible, um, with new barn doors and flashers down the front of it. So I had nothing to do with later application, but, um, I just, um, can you pay attention to this? It's a very unique feature on the site.
Thank you, Nancy.
Uh, Michael, the, uh, the reforms have all been met. Uh, the applications are all complete. And frankly, in this particular case, the necessary resolution is probably larger than the additional.
There's some no, two reasons about...
So it's, uh, there is a resolution that's recommended for your, uh, recommend, even most of the public hearing on this, uh, type two action. Move forward on the resolution.
Could I have a motion to move the public here? Second? How in favor?
I.
And I will read.
The Town of Reinick planning board upon review by the zoning enforcement officer and upon the satisfaction of referral requirements and the conduct of required duly notice of public hearing provided as follows in the matter of the March twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, application by Ruby Palmer, Ruby Palmer as agent for John Nathan, for special use permits under Town Co. Chapter one two five zoning, sections one two five six nine and one two five four oh H three and related site plan review and approval in the matter of proposed ninety-six square foot addition to an existing single-family dwelling. At thirty-two Kelly Street in the Reincliffe Hamlet and Reincliffe Overlake District, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District and the Town's LWRA, all is depicted and are otherwise described in the building plans by Reinick Alther Architect, dated March twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, and set forth a full AAF part one, not under part submission, being a type two action under seeker for which further environmental quality review is, is precluded. One, upon its own review of the required political assessment form and consideration of input from the Town's Waterfront Advisory Committee, the proposed undertaking be consistent with urban coastal policies set forth in the Town's local waterfront program. Two, in consideration of the application for special use permits under Town Co. Chapter one two five zoning, authorize the above described addition to the existing single-family dwelling... Two, in consideration of the application for special use permits under Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning, authorize the above described addition to the existing single-family dwelling related minor site improvements, A, determines neither the use nor proposed work contributing any of the general standards for all special use permits set forth at section one-two-five dash six-seven therein; B, further determines both the use and proposed work to be in performance with specific standards set forth in section one-two-five forty-H three therein for development of a thousand feet of Hudson River and the objective standards and guidelines set forth in section one-two-five six-nine therein for any development undertaken within Reincliffe Overlay District. C, grants the above cited special use permits pursuant to section one-two-five of the Town Code in subject of prior prerequisite conditions and or requirements. One, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town and Ryan Beck in respect of submission, review, and processing of this application under the Town Code Chapter one-two-five, the Town's fee schedule, and executed escrow agreement. Two, securing the site plan approval for the proposed work and subsequently a certificate of occupancy for the addition to the single-family dwelling. Three, in consideration of the application for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning, inclusive of the site plan and building plans cited above, A, waives any proposed site plan requirements as might be construed to be set forth in the section one-two-five seven-five C two of Town Code; B, approves the application for site plan approval and authorizes to term the so note on the building plans upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following condition and or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of the resolution. Payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town and Ryan Beck in respect of submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code Chapter one-two-five, the Town's fee schedule, and executed escrow agreement. Is action? The planning board further authorizes the Town's zoning enforcement officer to issue a certificate of occupancy for the addition to the single-family dwelling and related minor site improvements upon its determination. All other codes, laws, rules, regulations within the purview of the CEO and/or building inspector, including when not limited to the requirements of the New York State Uniform Building, Construction, and Fire Prevention Code, have been satisfied. Could I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll hold the board back.
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Melody? Karen?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Okay, you're all sat. Right on time, good board. Okay. Darren Page, twenty-second Street, special use permit and site plan, continuing from April twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, a combined public hearing on application by Darren Page pursuant to Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning, Chapter one-two-five six-nine D for special use permit and site plan review and approval, including particular consideration of the drainage and stormwater runoff mitigation plan required by the ZBA in the matter of proposed expansion of existing single-family dwelling from three thousand four hundred eighty-seven square feet to five thousand eight hundred fourteen square feet, as authorized by the ZBA, and installation of related site improvements on the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, being a type-one national secret, and area variance required by the ZBA.
To cut to the chase here, the, uh, planning board, continuing this public hearing to allow the, uh, to allow opportunity for review by the planning board engineer of the stormwater, uh, and, uh, and I'll read one paragraph from my meeting notes, which summarizes what's happened. The stormwater runoff mitigation plan was conferred by the planning board, the planning board and engineer Ray Jekowski for review and comment. He issued a review letter on April twenty-fourth, which was responded to later in the day by the project engineer, LRC group, through preparation of a revised drainage plan. The revised drainage plan was subsequently reviewed by the planning board engineer and assigned off a letter issued by the planning board engineer on May first. So the outstanding requirement has been satisfied.
Anything else you wanted to?
Nope.
You go to your two then.
We've had a site visit report, anyone in the public that thinks so? Okay. What I will do then is I have a secret resolution, which I will read, and if approved, we will be positioned to close the public hearing. As our private planning board, it asks us follows in the matter of a proposed action encompassing applications by Darren Page pursuant to Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning, Sections one-two-five six-nine D for special use permitting and site plan review and approval, including particular consideration of the drainage and stormwater runoff mitigation plan required by the ZBA in the matter of the proposed expansion of an existing single-family dwelling from three thousand four hundred eighty-seven square feet to five thousand eight hundred fourteen square feet, such extraordinary floor area authorized by the ZBA, and the installation of related site improvements, including a fence, at the extraordinary height authorized by the ZBA on the parcel in residential low density RL five and Reincliffe Overlay zoning districts and the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, being a connection under secret. One, determines upon review of the AAF part one and its own location of EAF part two, in consideration of the criteria for determining significance, set forth in type-six, Part six-one-seven point seven C and one C RR. The historic preservation policies underlying the historic district designation and the Brooklyn coastal policies set forth within the Town's LWRP that the proposed action is described in the application, and in consideration of the area variances herein court issued by the ZBA will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment, and thus issues a negative declaration, determination of non-significance, meaning an environmental impact statement to not be required, stating such will not be repaired. Two, authorizes the chairman to so execute the full EA option, directs the planning board toward the distributive and private full EA with negative declaration annotation and other documentation that may be pertinent for an unlisted action in the matter of set forth, uh, to a type-one action. In the matter set forth in the secret implementing regulations, type-six, Part six-one-seven point one-two NYCR R. Could I have a motion to approve? A second? Any discussion? I'll hold the board. Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Could I have your motion to both the public hearing? Second?
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Well, we've just grown out a little bit longer. We're only a whole lot longer. Okay. The Town and Planing Board, upon review by the zoning enforcement officer, noticing, posting, and conducting a combined public hearing, making of required referrals in consideration of input received hereby, access files in the matter of applications by Darren Page pursuant to Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning, Section one-two-five six-nine D for special use permit and site plan review and approval, including particular consideration of the drainage and stormwater runoff mitigation plan required by the ZBA in the matter of proposed expansion of an existing single-family dwelling from three thousand two hundred eighty-seven square feet to five thousand eight hundred fourteen square feet, such extraordinary floor area authorized by the ZBA, and the installation of related site improvements, including a fence at the extraordinary height authorized by the ZBA. In the residential low density RL five and Reincliffe Overlay zoning districts and Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, the fence connection under secret for which the planning board that solely involved agency with remaining permitting or approving jurisdiction has issued a negative declaration, determination of non-significance under secret, including incorporated statement of consistency with Brooklyn coastal policies set forth within the Town's LWRP. In consideration of, one, in consideration of the application for a special use permit under Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning, to authorize the above described addition to the existing single-family dwelling and related site improvements, A, determines neither the use nor proposed work contributing any of the general standards for all special use permits set forth in section one-two-five dash six-seven therein; B, further determines in consideration of the area variances granted by the ZBA, both for the use of proposed work to be in performance with the objective standards and guidelines set forth within section one-two-five dash six-nine therein for any development undertaken within the Reincliffe Overlay District. C, grants the above cited special use permits pursuant to said chapter one-two-five of the Town Code in subject of the following prerequisite conditions and or requirements. One, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town and Ryan Beck in respect of submission, review, and processing of this application under the Town Code Chapter one-two-five, the Town's fee schedule, and executed escrow agreement. Two, securing a site plan approval for the proposed work and subsequently a certificate of occupancy for renovated dwelling, single-family, renovated single-family dwelling. Two, in consideration of the application for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning, inclusive of the site plan, building plans, the drainage plan, and details, suit GB one runoff mitigation plan, LRC group, dated February twelfth, two thousand fourteen, and advised April twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, A, waives any further site plan requirements as might be construed to be set forth within section one-two-five dash seven-five C two of the Town Code; B, approves the application for site plan approval and authorizes the chairman of so note on the set consisting of site plan, building plans, drainage plan, and details, runoff mitigation plan, reviewed by applicants, upon the applicants. Satisfaction with the following conditions and or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. One, inclusion of a note on the site plan stating that the proposed renovation addition to the single-family dwelling will not result in an increase in current number of bedrooms as subject of prior approval by the Dutchess County Health Department, with the date of such approval to be included as part of this note. Two, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town and Ryan Beck in respect of submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code Chapter one-two-five, the Town's fee schedule, and executed escrow agreement. In taking this action, the planning board further authorizes the Town's zoning enforcement officer to issue a certificate of occupancy for the renovated, expanded, single-family dwelling with related site improvements upon its determination. The Dutchess County Health Department approval is in effect, and all other codes, laws, rules, or regulations within the purview of the CEO and/or building inspector, including when not limited to the requirements of the New York State Uniform Building, Construction, and Fire Prevention Code, have been satisfied. The CEO shall not segment the issue to the distributor of occupancy to support that the renovated, expanded, single-family dwelling may not be issued unless installation of the stormwater runoff mitigation measures in accordance with the plans approved by the planning board engineer has been certified by the project engineer. Could I have a motion to approve?
Some.
A second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Hearing now, hold the board. Bob?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Melody? And I'll vote aye. So, you're aye. I mean, you're good.
I'm gonna pass out.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, grace Bible we will be doing at our, in second meeting. Okay, we have one other item here, is there some of you in CSI? No? Okay, what this is about is CSI's final, um, and they got their final extension, and it runs out at the nineteenth of this month. They apparently were having some difficulty meeting some of the conditions of approval in the original approval resolution that in November of two thousand twelve. And, uh, I'm not entirely sure, I think, what they exactly wanted. I know that our attorney, John Lanning, spoke with them. I believe what they were hoping that we could modify some of the conditions, but given the time that we came forward with this request, uh...
Michael, it's possible that they may consult with the agenda, and they are scheduled at seven forty-five, so I think you have to wait until seven forty-five. I see it's, uh, Brad Schwartz of Darren's, who requested the consultation with the board.
The June schedule, yes. As you know, we have a June second meeting. Our next meeting will be July twenty-something, in July, or December, or four, likely, because we switch to the, uh, second, third Monday of the month, and, you know, this holiday, so July fourth and Labor Day and things like that. It's been suggested that we're probably gonna want a second meeting in June, uh, to try and bridge that gap. That would be about a six-week gap. We're gonna be meeting on July twenty-first again.
Yeah, the gap is actually, would be from, yeah, from June second to, uh, July twenty-first, which is back seven weeks.
So, it's been suggested that...
Sounds like a nice break.
There is that, yes. That. We will be having, um...
The...
The Duffy, uh, they will be coming before us. Rockledge may well be coming before us, they're still working on applications, they're still working on... Did any of you people, any of you guys take them up and got off today?
Sort of a...
Open house.
Yeah, we went to the neighbors' home.
Just the neighbors.
Oh, I went to the neighbors'. Apparently, the, uh, Charles Blasman, uh, sent a communication last week to his neighbors, um, advising that, uh, the property was gonna be open for, for touring, for tours, uh, yesterday. And, uh, the only, I saw a brief, uh, memo, I think, from Bob Fox, that said, it worked out, or got well, and we all attended, and it was a good discussion. But it was a personal communication sent by Charles Blasman to the neighbors on, uh, on sale, and he, you know, drew, drew the red marker.
But it's probably the same thing that we...
Yeah, well, I've heard some of the things, so, yeah. So I've, I've heard nothing back about it, but I know they're working on it, but I, they don't have an application for us.
Michael, focusing on this, uh, this question seven week yet, uh, if you were to go with the, uh, a second meeting in June on the sixteenth, you would still have a two-week and then a five-week gap. So I think you'd wanna push that, uh, that second June meeting down the road, out there another week, uh, if, if the space is available to the fourth Monday. Then we kind of, you can even things out, three weeks after the June meeting and four weeks before the July meeting.
I think fourth Monday's for Town Board, aren't they? Fourth Mondays of the month, Town Board, you have to pitch to the Tuesday or something like that.
You do it on a Tuesday, the other, the other option would be, you would, uh, just split the seven and the eight in the other fashion by having a meeting on June thirtieth, which would be four weeks after the June meeting and three weeks before the July meeting. The fourth is not until the Friday of the year.
Different time of year. Who's up in the business? Who do you have at Spirit Park? Would you, any would be available on the period?
Probably, yeah, June.
That's the week of the war, so everybody could say that.
It's the Monday of the war, that, that... Or the Friday.
Well, I just did, I was often thinking something to get out of school.
That's true.
That's a big, that's a big vacation week for the athletes.
Then, then you're looking at probably another date, then, uh, the week of the twenty-first, the Monday.
Well, we can meet on the fourth Monday, because the Town Board meeting's up here, uh, maybe the seventh and the fourth Mondays.
And you're too busy, you're too busy these days, you meet downstairs, as you occasionally didn't pass.
Right. Oh, Michael? Are you guys meeting on Wednesday night?
Yes.
You are, okay, so you will have grace Bible?
Good, that's basically the only reason, or maybe if you have nothing else on the agenda, that's, uh...
Okay, so then, we could actually, you have grace Bible, move it to the nineteenth?
Move it to the nineteenth, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I'll talk to you tomorrow, get that information.
Excellent, Mike, thank you, Michael.
So do we now have a June nineteenth, we do?
Well, before we do that, what I'd like to do, I think we, we scheduled grace Bible, continuous the public hearing on June second. I'd like to reschedule it to May nineteenth, because the ZBA will act this Wednesday night.
Well, that's not, that's not public hearing, that was simply a matter of decision.
It was?
Yeah.
You did close the book, yes?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
You, you have seen from close last year. That is a matter of consuming the resolution.
We move them to May nineteenth, do you consider that a approval?
So your May nineteen special agenda is, uh, is Matthews, um, Blackwood, Duffy, and the six members.
Okay. Did you get that, Tom? Good, because I, I was going to place that without them. Okay, that'll, that's gonna be very helpful, but...
And what's on the second, June?
Whatever, whatever might come in, you know, and, uh...
Nothing.
Uh, the only rule over to the second of June at this point in time is the, uh, the Redrum Act.
Yeah.
Everything else, and anything at rules, from the May nineteenth.
But July seventh?
Well, if people wanna meet the Monday after the Blackwood weekend, that's the thing. It's just, it's, it's, it's a big holiday, and that's why we, that's why we skipped to the third Monday, it's better than July, if we cover that, usually it's, the fourth screws up, the first Monday.
At best, in terms of splitting the time to do something, though, we get that, we get the twenty-third.
Yeah, we do that.
Four, CSI, so, did we give CSI?
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.
Okay.
Cool. That's safe. We don't wanna meet the thirtieth, we keep the fifth Monday in June. Okay.
One through the twenty-sixth.
I have one on the board, it's so helpful to... I keep getting it straight all the time. I have, well, it's much appreciated. I guess what we're thinking, what was the, uh, let me see. We can't meet the fourth Monday, we could meet the fourth Tuesday, which would be, is that the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Twenty-fourth. So how's the twenty-fourth, June?
I'm not sick, I'm, I am working on it. First of all, the night in June, I'm not, uh, June, I'm not available.
Very, how about Wednesday? Um, I said the twenty-fifth, because the ZBA would have met previously, Wednesday.
Is it the fourth Wednesday or?
Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah.
And I'll be the third one. Fourth Monday okay for people? The twenty-seventh of June? Is it pleased any of it?
Fourth is any order, depending on how you look at it.
Could I have your motion to schedule a second meeting in June for June twenty-fifth at six-thirty? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And, you know, if anything falls apart, we cancel that on June second.
You may not need it.
Right, we don't need it, we're not gonna do it.
We may not.
Okay. Two minutes of meditation.
The twenty-fifth?
The update on the CSI, I'm sure, is that two weeks in termination, uh, of the, uh, with, which is outstanding. Freddie Caston, who said, I think, Freddie Caston, with, uh, the heart of town.